Where'd Amy go? Amy, you ready?
Yes, Jessica.
Amy, are you ready?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 14th work session for the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. We don't have to go through a lot of it, so I'll let the board members introduce themselves. Starting with Judy.
Judy Gillius.
Patty Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe Van Kirk.
Jake Kuzina.
Lynn Delahay. Oh, I'll say, good afternoon, Lynn Delahay. Also with us from county staff, we have the Director of the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, Jessica Andrich, her Deputy Director, Brandy Glenn, and their Senior Planning Specialist, Gabrielle Gleisner. From the county also, we have our Deputy County Attorney, Mr. John Sterling Hauser, Acting Director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation, Donald Mills, from the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, Kristy Hollander, we have Bruce Young from the Soil Conservation, we have Mr. John Brown with us from the Board of Appeals, we have Laurie Jennings Harris from the Department of Aging and Human Services, our video media producer today is Amy Carter, and also with us from Clarion Associates, we have LeAnn King, Jasmine Davidson.
Did I miss anybody? Don't be shy. Okay, we're in good shape. Good afternoon, Jessica.
All right, well, good afternoon. As you indicated, I am the Director of Land Use and Growth Management, and joined with me today is Brandy Glenn, and I guess, welcome to the first of five work sessions that we're going to be having over the next several weeks. I know that you all know this, but because the meeting this afternoon is also going to be stored on YouTube, I'd like to say, just for the general public, that these are work sessions that are intended for you all to provide some feedback and some thoughts and guidance and direction. The public is absolutely welcome and invited to attend. Mr. Chair, it's up to you on whether you feel it appropriate for them to contribute to the meeting in any sort of way, but I wanted to let you know that we'll be having five of these work sessions to go over, I'm going to say now, a little bit more of the skeleton of the comprehensive plan as it's being structured. And when we get through with these five work sessions, the consultant team and the technical review committee members, generally speaking, either the directors, deputy directors of the various departments, including Metcom and Health Department and the Navy, is also invited to participate and interact. The team will go back and put together a real first draft. I'm not even calling what's before you today a first draft. That will occur over Christmas and January, and then, right now, tentatively scheduled for February, will be the unveil of the initial draft plan. And right now, in order to keep us on schedule, we have planned for 45 days of public comment. They'll be able to interact with us in particular. We, as I mentioned in some of the other meetings that we've been together in, we'll be going around the county, holding workshops and providing localized opportunity for folks to interact, ask questions, provide feedback, and we'll take all of that information in. And from there, another draft will be produced, and that'll be the draft that then comes before you for, I'm going to say, in theory, a vote, but you could certainly send us back and say, we'd like you to revise or relook at one issue or another. So I wanted to make sure that everybody, certainly watching at home or at work, understood that the public isn't being left out. We're just, believe it or not, we're not there yet. This is not the first draft. Like I said, that'll be released, we hope, in the beginning of February. So I hope that provides a little bit of context for what we're doing this afternoon. The way that we've structured it is, and just call your attention to the documents that were uploaded to Board Docs, the first one is the Housing Framework and Analysis, and we're going to start there, and then we'll carry on to the Growth Management Framework and Analysis. We also do have, and Gabby, I really appreciate you, we have some maps of certain geographic areas within the county, so to the extent that you all want to see those maps, you just ask, and Gabby will point and click, and we've got the maps preloaded so that they can pop up on your screen. They'll also pop up on the screens for everybody at home. And just as a reminder, there are these big hefty things that should have been delivered or provided to you as well. If, for some reason, there are questions or discussions that we're not able to get to in relation to these two topics, the housing and the Growth Management Framework, we do have time reserved on your next work session, which will be next Friday at 2:00, so we've reserved some time in case there are follow-up questions or things that you've asked us to provide. We can certainly do that, and it won't knock the work session off schedule. So just wanted to kind of lay that foundation for you, but if you all are ready, we can jump into the Housing Framework and Analysis, but before I do that, I just want to acknowledge LeAnn and Jasmine, and so before I haul off and lead this part of our discussion, is there anything that you all wanted to share from your end?
Okay.
Thanks, Jessica. Was this for us or for...
Yes, yes, it was for you. Just if there's anything you wanted to add before I get started.
No, happy to be here today, happy to answer any questions that you have, provide any guidance that might be helpful.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so let's go ahead and get started, and what I'd like to do is ask for you to turn, first, just to the table of contents. This will give a little roadmap, and I think sometimes it's easier to see the forest for the trees when you look at this. So as you can see, what is before you is arranged really into two sections. The first one gives a little bit of factual content and background for the housing policies, and I'm going to say, the goals, policies, and actions that will then follow. You'll notice, under Goals, Policies, and Actions, that in this particular section, there are five goals, and so, one of the things that we'll be asking you all to weigh in on, and that we'll be asking the public to weigh in on, is whether or not you think these five goals are good goals, that they reflect what it is that our county wants to see as we move towards 2050. So the way the document is structured also, before we get into the meat and potatoes of it, is you'll notice that there's a lot of colors, number one, because we really wanted to show off the Comp Plan logo colors, but also to explain and to easily highlight the goals and policies and actions that might be new, or that are carried forward from the 2010 Comp Plan. Not, we haven't achieved all of the ideas and objectives that were set forth in the 2010 Comp Plan. We are not unlike every other jurisdiction in Maryland and probably all over the United States. There's still work to be done, you know, even though we call this St. Mary's 2050, we'll be back here doing this again within the next 10 years, because the state does require us to review and update as necessary, but certainly no later than at 10-year intervals. So you'll see some repeat policies and actions. We think that, based on the information that we've gotten from you and the commissioners and the members of our community, that these goals and policies and actions really reflect the feedback that was provided. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. So the first, I'm going to now turn to page three, and at the top, it says that we're talking about planning for housing, and this first page and a half shares some national and regional trends as it relates to housing. Very important, especially as we look out into the future, to remain grounded, sort of, on where we are at this moment in our county's history, but certainly where we are in relation to the state and its goals, and certainly, housing as a whole on the national level. You'll see that one of the things that we're really focusing on, based on the feedback that we got, is attainable housing, and that's a term that we came up with, because it's not necessarily talking about workforce housing, it's not necessarily talking about affordable housing, it's providing and acknowledging that everyone should be able to get the housing that they need and want, and so that's why we've used the term attainable housing. And so you'll see some data, beginning then on page five, at the bottom of page five, you'll see some, and also page six, you'll see some data from the community engagement windows that we had earlier this year, in the early, late winter, early spring, and then later on in the summer. And so you'll see on the top of page six, diverse housing options and affordability, and you'll see, under these topics, what the participants or what our community members said about their need and their desire for housing. You'll see that there's a general acknowledgement that we're seeing, you know, on a national level, of needing diverse housing options. We did see very strong support, as you heard from LeAnn last time, strong support for smaller homes and townhouses, and in fact, if you were to scour through all of the community engagement work that we did on the county's behalf earlier in the year, you'll note that 76% of the participants agreed with providing smaller homes and townhousing options in growth areas, particularly as we thought for our young families, young professionals, and certainly our critical employees. We also heard from the community the importance of multifamily options. 66% of them, if you'll remember, agreed that providing multifamily options in the growth areas, right, we're not talking about rural or agricultural areas, we're talking about in the growth areas, that most people in the county supported that idea. And moving on, you'll see where folks said that they would be open or strongly supporting some of the housing types, and so that information is shared there. And then we get to page seven. I'm going to take a pause real quick, because I just went through a whole bunch of pages. Most of the information that I shared with you, well, I think all of the information that I shared with you should not be new. Certainly, everybody is aware of what's going on at the national level, and certainly at the state level, but before I move on and start talking about your goals, policies, and actions, are there any questions so far?
I have a couple comments. I shared a little bit with Jessica and Brandy, but I had asked a question earlier about, excuse me, about just using and having access to median income, and the response back from the Economic Development Commission was, well, that's what we, that's been consistent, and that's what we use, and I understand that, and that's what a lot of jurisdictions use, is that. But we needed additional data points to give you real insight, and in the first page, on page four, I think this, because this is one of the most important things I think this board can do as terms of recommendations. If you look at the numbers in the first sub-bullet where it says, okay, our median income here is 114, 580, if you drop down from that, if I, if I take out, like, just, and looking, and you can parse data any way you want, but take out the 100, 124, and take out the bottom 9% that are below 25,000, you're still looking at 35% of the population in St. Mary's County are young people that we want to stay here, can't afford to buy a home, because either the size of the homes, or there's obviously numerous reasons. If I put, you know, so if I, like, then outliers, I took the high, I took the low out, 35% of our young people are nurses, firefighters, you name it, can't afford to buy a home here. And there's got to be, when we come down to goals and recommendations, we don't want them leaving. I know lots of people can now drive from King George County and come this way, so we're losing tax base, we're losing just families that want to stay. So this, I appreciate this data being here, and this is the kind of data that we really need to look at if we're going to be able to, you know, say, well, what is affordable? I was hoping Connor would be here, because I think that, and then if you go down to the next paragraph or two down, 46% of the people, if you look at the homes that are available in an affordable range, it's like 44, there's very little, because they've declined. There was 46% of homes available under 300,000. 300,000 is probably a target, you know, upper 2s, low 3s, if you, but if you think about it, I've only been on this board since January, we've approved nothing. No developers come forth with anything that's not upper 3s and low 4s. So we're not hitting the, you know, we're not doing anything right now to hit the mark, and that is something that we really need to look at, because when I played with the numbers a little bit, we might have 2% of housing that people can, if you can find it, you can buy it, you know, but it's 2%, and we've got 35% of the people that are potentially looking for homes. So I just wanted to make that comment, that this kind of data is important, and we can't overlook it, and if I'm, and may I also make an assumption that we're not even talking, and people freak out at this, Section 8 housing, this isn't addressing anything like that, because I don't know if we really address Section 8 housing. I think that's the housing authority, and I know there's initiatives that go on there. So this is just our general population. So this is really important, that we can potentially make some recommendations to what we can do to help this process. That's, I just wanted to put that out there, because, and I, again, thank you for putting the data in there. And so, and then the only other comment is on page five. Everything that's come forth has been defined workforce housing, okay? Workforce, right now, that's the upper 3s, low 4s, townhouses, and single, you know, homes there. I've not heard the terms before, and again, this will just be my lack of knowledge, missing middle and gentle density, you know, and I know people get nervous when you talk affordable, because they go to the Section 8 stuff, you know, concept, but we just need to be clear on our terms and potentially where we incentivize, if we can ever incentivize builders. So I would just like to say that.
Judy, first of all, thank you very much for your comments, and I will say that one of the things that Jasmine is doing online at the moment is she's capturing all of the feedback and other questions and stuff that you might have, so that we can make sure that, as we move forward to a first draft of this, that it does reflect really data-driven information. That was one of the reasons why we really felt like Clarion was a good fit for this project. I did want to alert you to one item, which is, and again, because we don't have a first draft yet, these are just initial thoughts. We are planning to put together a glossary of terms, and this is going to be, I'm going to say, different from what you would expect to find in the CZO. These are not going to be necessarily legal terms, but to help people understand the words that guide decisions regarding land use in their county, where they work and live and pay taxes. And one of the things, certainly, that we want to share, and I actually put together a couple of notes about middle housing, because that's not something that I've heard the Planning Commission specifically talk about, and while I certainly can assume that all of you, you know, are somewhat aware of the concept, I know that we have viewers at home or at work that are not familiar with those terms, and so I did want to share a little bit more information about that as we move forward. Patty, it looked like, though, you had either a question or a thought that you wanted to share after Judy.
Well, it aligns with what Judy already stated. I too am a data-driven person, so I, when I saw the 46%, or, first, I agree with you what you stated in the first part about the percentages. The second part was the 46% decline, and talking about the availability under 300,000. I don't want us to lose sight that, is this, is this dollar amount normalized? In other words, what was, is, when you think about this 10 years ago, 12 years ago, and equate it to today's dollars, would you get 46% decline? I just want to bring up the fact that inflation has taken a considerable, considerable change, or made a considerable change in the environment and what we're, I mean, in the total economy. So we need to look at, how much did it buy back then versus what it can buy now?
Sure.
And then look at, make decisions based on that.
Yeah, well, and we've...
Because 300,000 today might mean 100,000 13 years ago. So you would get a 46, I mean, what's that mean?
Yeah. The other thing I'd like to bring up, and I'm assuming we will get into this, is I talked to a couple small builders in the county, and I think in here, there's some places, a recommendation that the county commissioners and people meet, you know, have a, get the builders together, because the commissioners may say, it's the builders' fault, and the builders are going, no. So I had some people that I knew, so I went and talked to them, and I just asked the question, I said, because they built spec homes, you know, for people. They said, we would love to not have to deal with people and build spec homes, we would love to be able to build smaller homes. Some of the comments were, and I had the numbers written down, is that before we even break ground for a house, we have, for some reason, the number 25, $30,000 sunk, before we do anything, before we start bringing in the lumber and bringing in whatnot. So that says, you know, your houses are going to have to cost X amount, because I've got to do all this stuff. So in those recommendations is, what kind of incentives can the county offer, I mean, to small businesses? I mean, I'm not talking the, you know, and I even know what these people pay themselves in a salary. They only pay themselves $50,000 a year, you know, there happens to be two people, so, and they would love to be able to build smaller homes, but it's almost like an affordable, it's an affordability issue. Now, maybe your big boys can afford to, you know, to do something different, when you get your smaller builders down here, and that's not necessarily there. So I'm hoping that we can make recommendations for some considerations, like Howard, you brought up last time, reducing open space densities in development districts. That's one of them, but there's, I'm sure there's other things that we can do, you know, to help, you know, lower some of the initial costs so that we could get some $300,000 homes built. I think that's what Charles County now has decided and is targeting, and I don't know who I spoke to about that, but that's a focus for them, is building that, that kind of, that, you know, that size house, it's a smaller house, but it's what they're considering affordable, so.
All right. Anything else before I move us on?
I did have a few more.
Yes, please.
On page five, when you were going through that, I actually was concerned about some of the problems that were addressed, and it came across as, we agree with all of this, and I know, for instance, bullet number three, reduce parking, landscaping, et cetera, for single homes and multifamily to help offset costs, and you've heard us preach up here about those same issues, when there is none in a plan. And I think there's a fine line there between, I think you better be very, we better be very careful about how we look at that statement.
Can't take parking out.
You can't. I'm just saying, let's look at these, because, because in my opinion, this preamble to the back, the goals, is really, really setting the stage, and I don't know if we've all agreed on these bullets.
Well, so these bullets, and LeAnn, correct me if I'm wrong, but these bullets aren't expressing any sort of opinion in relation to what we've heard from Planning Commission members, county commissioners, or the public. This is just a summary of what other communities across our country and across the state are doing, but they're not advocating for a position one way or the other, it's just, let's build awareness and create sort of the context for what comes later, so I hear what you're saying there, but it's not to advocate for any of these things, it's just, hey, here are some of the things that we're noticing in this space in this moment in time.
Well, like it says, these approaches were considered as part of the plan. That's the last statement, so that's kind of...
Yes, yep, and we'll...
I'm just saying, I think we better be careful about what we're considering, because it sets the stage.
For sure, and that's, you're absolutely right, and to that end, you will see what some of these things look like, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that as we get on into our discussion about middle housing, but I want to make sure that you are able, and everybody else is able, to provide comments and feedback. Do you have other items that you wanted to share? No. Okay.
I think, just piggybacking on that, in the reducing parking type of thing, you know, that comes if we move ahead and we can build more houses on a lot, say, and, but that all keys up on public transportation, you know, if you don't have to have as many parking spots, well, yeah, but you got to be able to go to work, you got to have transportation, you know, one works with the other.
There's definitely that give and take.
Reducing the restrictions on how many houses you can put on a lot, on a, say, an acre lot, if you, I'm not going to call them tiny houses, I'm just going to call them more affordable houses, where you have, you know, 1,000 to 1,500 square feet, I'll call it a starter home, and if you can get in there and start with that, and that gives, I'll say, the, it's not just the younger generation, any generation, gives people that haven't had one a place to start, but if they can, I don't know if it's the right word, a rule or a law that, that they keep that housing affordable, otherwise, I'm just going to use you as an example, you're starting out, and you're going to buy this 1,500-square-foot house, five years from now, things are going good, you're ready to move up to a 2,500-square-foot house. How would we make it so that that house, that 1,500-square-foot house stays in that, otherwise somebody doesn't get to buy it up and start to build onto it? You know, do we have restrictions that, you know, if we have, instead of a few houses with TDRs and things like that, let's say, I'm just throwing this number out, so bear with me here, suppose they want to build eight to 10 houses on an acre of property, small houses, that fit almost like a cul-de-sac type of a living, how do we keep it like that, so that they don't either expand it, move up, you know, so that when Brandy comes up behind you, and she's ready to buy her first house, that 1,500-square-foot house is still there in order to turn that over?
Well, and one thing I do want to point out about this third bullet, I'm just going to read it for those at home, reducing parking, landscaping, and open space requirements for single-family attached and multifamily housing to help offset construction costs. I think the average person might assume that we're talking about new housing construction, but there's no use of those words in that bullet. And so when we talk about missing middle housing and some other concepts down the way, we certainly could be talking about existing single-family homes that are sectioned off, right? And so when we talk about missing middle housing and some other concepts down the way, we certainly could be talking about existing single-family homes that are sectioned off, right? So that the feel of the neighborhood maybe isn't any different. It just, it does, you know, you can turn in a home, a single-family home, into something where two families could live comfortably and privately and things like that. But, so this bullet, though, is not necessarily talking about new construction. It could be talking about transitioning and sort of reuse and adaptive reuse. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew we weren't necessarily talking about new home construction, but also trying to keep the housing stock that we have, and I'm going to say, keep it attainable.
Can I say something real quick?
Thanks.
Do you mind?
Yeah.
I know, because I sit here most Monday nights, that parking is an issue. And I don't know if this is the place to do it, or this is the time to do it, but if reducing parking was removed from this section, would that make you feel better?
I had an issue with the open space requirements.
You have that? You have an issue with that as well?
Yeah, especially when it relates to, like, the playgrounds and, you know, things of that nature.
So that, so that's kind of different, because that's amenity space. So this, this would just be, you know, in some zoning districts, we have a requirement for fifty percent open space, which really, really reduces what you can put on that, and it's undeveloped open space. So I believe that's really what this is talking about. So we could clarify that.
Yeah, that'd be better.
Like undeveloped open space instead of usable?
Right.
Because you want the usable open space.
Right.
So this would be, this would be reducing the required undeveloped open space.
Okay, that makes a difference.
A big difference.
Yeah.
So clarify that.
And take out, reduce parking.
Take away that? Would that make you feel better?
Because until St. Mary's County changes enough, I'll say, to have more public transportation, we're a transportation county. I mean, you know.
Right.
You want to do anything, you're going to get in the car. So you have two people in a house. You know, the restrictions have been, you know, two parking spots and a lot of, a lot of the developments that we've done, with one of the parking spots being in a garage, that they're going to fill up with everything that they, besides a car. So we're basically giving them a parking spot, so.
And I may be speaking out of turn.
And the developers have, I guess, caught on, because it seems like the last few developments that have come before us, they've provided extra parking. I don't know if that's with y'all, working with them, and if it is, thank you. I'd like to even see a little bit more, but that, you know, it's a big difference. I mean, if I was going to buy a house, and I went in there, and they told me, I have a garage and a parking spot, well, I'm going down the road, because it's not going to work for the Thompsons, that's for sure.
You know, when you go back, you said this earlier, and I think you were talking about integrated approach to looking at this, in that I think that's where we fail somewhat in these planning meetings, is because we don't think, I mean, we don't even have a roadmap that says, if this happens, this has got to happen over here. And it's the relationship between transportation, like you said, and how many parking spots, you know? The, it's the dependencies.
Sure.
Or the interdependencies of one thing to another. And I think that's what we need to be more conscious of when we're developing this plan, is how are we impacting transportation? Or how is that, you know, or is transportation, what we put in there, going to impact what we wrote up here? It's, you need to.
And that's why we do have the, have the transportation, I'm going to say, chapter, section, because one certainly feeds into and directly affects the other.
But I know, do you know what I mean?
I do.
We don't have that roadmap.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
We have a cost reference.
That's what I'm saying, like, we're doing a schedule, you know? Oh, well, that's dependent on that happening, and this is dependent.
Yeah. So I understand what you're saying, and I know that Jasmine's made a note of, made a note of that. I think also, I noticed that, LeAnn, I don't know if this was intentional, but you came off mute, and so I'm assuming that you also may have something to share.
I think I may have come off mute a couple of points ago, but I think what you bring up is a really important point to reflect on, the nexus between land use and transportation. It's something that is, and it's actually another factor with respect to affordability. We don't talk about it in this draft that we have in front of you, but, you know, that's another kind of consideration when you, there are different entities out there that evaluate affordability costs for households when you couple transportation and housing. So I think that, to your point, they're very important considerations, they're coupled together, one influences the other, and we need to make sure that as we're moving through this process, not just with respect to affordability, but with respect to how you design your systems to support whatever growth is intended to be accommodated through this process. Those need to be looked at, and they need to be in sync with each other.
Okay. All right. Any other?
I do think what Brandy said about the third bullet would sit better with me, just as one, as one person reading that, if they did, took the parking out, because it is something that we argue for a lot, and changed the open space to, like you said, the undeveloped open space. And on the third to last bullet, where it says incentivizing or requiring construction of units affordable to certain households, typically identified as a percentage of the median income. Didn't we used to do that many years ago? I remember some projects where they'd say they were building a hundred townhouses, three of them have to be set for certain price or certain, but I think has all that went to the wayside? I don't remember seeing that before.
I don't think it was, Brandy, you've been here as long as I have, but I don't know if that was ever a rule, but it was a.
It's a density bonus, for example.
Courtesy. Yeah, they used to get, I can remember the last one was, I think they were building something down off pegged roads, some townhouses off pegged roads, eight or nine years ago, seven, eight years ago.
Well, you also had another project recently that did some workforce, and they had to do that.
Yeah, but they, like I say, some of them terms are very misleading. You know, workforce housing, people's thinking, if they're in one of the thirty-five percent, like Judy said, they're going to be able to workforce into them houses, but they're not. So, like I say, I don't know the answer to the workforce affordable, attainable, middle. I don't know the, you know, there's a lot of terminology that seems to all be over what a lot of people can buy. And I know somebody else up here said it, it's also all driven by the economy. I sold real estate for twenty-eight years, just stopped a couple of years ago. Fifteen, twenty years ago, you could search houses under two fifty, three hundred, and there would be plenty of them. Not plenty, plenty, but now, I don't have the MLS anymore, but I'll bet you there's not one house under two fifty.
Zillow works just fine, too. Zillow works just fine, too.
Okay, yeah.
You won't find many there that are habitable.
But, well, yeah, that's the, that's the key for getting a mortgage, you've got to be habitable. Well, yeah, I was just wondering, with that third, is that third bullet from the bottom meant to try to bring something back?
So again, this is just creating context for the other parts of the plan that follow and summarizing what you see going around the country and in the state. This is not the place where recommendations are being made, it's just to help to build awareness of the reader, for the reader, of what's going on in the housing space at the time that your comprehensive plan is being prepared. That's, I think, really all it's intended to do. LeAnn, do you have anything else to add on that point?
Yeah, this list is really kind of the inventory of options, if you want to think about it that way. It's almost a menu to consider. Not all of these may necessarily be the right fit for St. Mary's County, but we wanted to kind of, we wanted to basically start with, you know, what we've seen work in other communities, and then start to have a discussion about those, or what would be appropriate in your community. And that third from the bottom bullet, that says incentivizing or requiring construction of units affordable to certain households, and in parentheses, typically identified per percent of area median income as part of new residential or mixed-use developments, that kind of touches on the point that Mr. Thompson had talked about earlier, in terms of maintaining affordability over time. Typically, the way it works, it's often called inclusionary housing. It can either be voluntary or mandatory. It sounds like you have a voluntary option with bonus density right now, that developers can choose to take. Some communities choose to require it in certain circumstances, and they'll define very specifically what affordability levels they want to have, based on kind of their social demographics within their community, and who they're trying to create more housing for. So that is a, that's a tool. Again, you're already, it sounds like you already have the option out there for doing bonus density, which comes under that incentivizing construction of units category. But to your point, it may be that one thing to look at is the actual median income, area median income percentages, what those ranges are that you're targeting for affordability. Maybe you need to take a closer look at those to make sure they're getting the right kind of folks, households, that you really are trying to achieve housing for.
I have one thing, too. Under this incentivizing, we're talking about construction companies. I think I'd like to add somewhere, and I'm not sure this is the right place, but to incentivize people who have rental units, rental homes, to incentivize those people to maintain their homes the way that they should be, but should be incentivized when they do, because you can have one neighbor here and one, another owner on the next door that is not maintaining their yard or not keeping it clean. So those who take really good care, have good tenants, I think we should incentivize those people as well.
Okay, then that's something we'll need to take a note of, because there is a place further into the document where we talk about making sure that, that area, existing areas are kept in really usable spaces. So I'm going to make a note, Jasmine, if you can also make a note, that we just need to make sure that we're hitting those, those items. Now, when you say incentivize, I think the draft here, and I know I'm jumping ahead of things a little bit, talks more about probably code enforcement rather than incentivizing. What sort of incentives do you think ought to be included as part of the conversation? Not necessarily, you know, a requirement, but what ideas did you have in mind for options as far as incentivizing people to keep up their property?
One of the things would be some kind of a tax bracket, where they would pay a lesser amount of taxes than somebody else.
Property taxes, right?
Property tax, yeah, that's, yeah, property tax. But they'd have to meet the certain criteria, of course, that would say, we keep it, you know, doors work, refrigerators work, all that stuff.
That word, property taxes, get people to sit up.
Yeah.
Got me to sit up.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if they're doing due diligence in providing homes for people who can't afford the home, I think they should be incentivized.
That's interesting. That is, because, you know, the Housing Authority has those rule, I mean, has a lot of those guidelines in place for the houses that they manage, is that they have to maintain them to a certain level. And just as an FYI, the Housing Authority says, and, because right now, we have no like waiting lists in St. Mary's anymore, I understand, they're moving to some kind of a lottery system, but they use fifty percent of the median. So, for example, you can't rent or get one of those houses that may be available. So what would that be? If our median is, what, a hundred and fourteen, so is it, what, fifty-six, that fifty-six thousand? You can't exceed that level of income. But I'm just saying, for guidelines, some of those are, like what you're talking about, Lynn, they're out there. I mean, whether it be code enforcement, or like tax, you know, breaks or whatever, they float around in other departments that we might look at.
We have a Blaine Law, don't we?
We do.
There's a Blaine Law, I don't know how well it's enforced, or who even enforces it or whatever, but I know there's something on the books for.
Yes, and so, and that's kind of what I was, was trying to tease out here, was that we do have, I'm going to say, consequences and enforcement mechanisms available, but because Lynn had mentioned incentivizing, I was trying to just figure out what that would look like. So I've made some notes, and I've heard what you said. Any other thoughts before I move us on to goal number one? I know, I mean, I know, but, and good, like, don't feel rushed, because we did reserve a great deal of time next time as well. We've only got one other topic to discuss next week, so don't feel rushed in this part. This is important conversation that needs to happen.
In incentivizing developers or builders, I want to call it developers, instead of being able to say, buy, only be able to build five on an acre, or something like that. And how many TDRs do you have to have if you're going to? I don't have that in my head like you do.
Right. So it depends on the zoning district, we're just going to pick RL. So if we're talking about an acre, you need four.
Okay. Four to do.
For you, to do five.
Okay.
An acre to five.
So suppose you had.
In the RL, because that's the max.
Had four TDRs, and then let them build seven or eight, and incentivize that, you know? If they're building the right-sized house in the right place, why not let them build a couple of more houses in that? You know, I mean, folks, I don't think they mind living together if they can afford to live in a house.
Or an area, yeah.
Especially if the area is near, I'll say, a park. If they can't have a nice, big yard for the kids to play, but there's a park right across the street, you know, something like that, that's, that's a big, that's a big deal. I mean, just being able to own your own home is, you know.
Yes. I mean, I think that's the, if DED was here today, they would tell you that, you know, homeownership is kind of the gateway to building equity and, you know, creating a life for yourself and your family. It's the biggest investment that we're going to make in our lifetimes, unless we play the lottery, which I don't, but at this rate, I might consider it. Anyway, so shall we move on to goal number one? Let's start with that one. So goal number one overall is to support the development of modern attainable housing choices. And you'll see, under goal number one, so that's page seven, you'll see under that there are quite a few policies. I'm sorry, I'm trying to fast-forward here. It looks like there are eight of them. And just for those listening at home, I'm going to rattle them off pretty quickly, but then we're going to jump back to middle housing. So the first policy is to support the development of workforce and missing middle housing. The second one is foster the development of senior housing options. The third one is to ensure age and ability friendliness through accessible designs. The fourth one, monitor the county's housing stock to ensure choices for all income levels. The fifth one is to encourage the inclusion of accessory dwelling units and apartments. The sixth one, encourage efficient design to reduce costs and impacts of development. The seventh is permit manufactured housing in all residential areas. And the eighth one, provide quality housing and housing services to meet resident needs. So I'd like to take us back to the first policy, support the development of workforce and missing middle housing. So missing middle housing refers to the housing types that I'm going to say are sandwiched in between your traditional single-family dwellings and sort of mid and high-rise apartments, which obviously we don't have here. And so that housing stock that we'd be traditionally talking about, our duplexes and townhouses and small-scale multifamily developments. And the missing middle housing is the housing type that we know from my family pictures that tell stories over time. It's the housing type that existed in our country, sort of at the turn of the twentieth century, until the mid, I'm going to say, nineteen twenties, give or take, when we started seeing Euclidean zoning pop up. And so as a reminder for those that are watching, the Euclidean zoning takes its name from Euclid, Ohio, where we saw land uses being segregated in a certain geographic location to keep, one, I'm going to say, some of the detrimental effects of one use kind of bleeding on to another. So the factors that have contributed to the loss of your middle housing, there are many of them, but I think most experts, and it's something that you've already pointed out, Joe, I think you did that, point out that it's the affordability of cars, and I'm going to say, being a driving force to the middle housing issue that we've seen. to the, the middle housing issue that, that we've seen. When people could live in one area and, and drive to another area to work, that's when we started seeing the disappearance of these middle housing units because people could buy a car, they could use the car to get out. And so people didn't need to live across the street from a factory or a commercial district or, or a traditional business district, they, they could just get in their car and drive away. And most experts, I guess, will tell you that's when the need for housing in close proximity to work became less of, of a necessity. So the biggest barriers to addressing the, the middle housing crisis are things that you would expect to find in a traditional zoning ordinance. So minimum lot sizes setbacks, minimum parking requirements, minimum open space and undeveloped open space requirements and maximum densities. And these limits often negate the possibility for anything but large expensive single family dwelling units or I'm going to say large scale multifamily units. And one of the barriers to addressing the middle housing crisis that we don't really talk about, and I know this is going to sound odd, is, is money, but not the way that, that most folks would think about it. And it's through our building codes. Building a, a single family home or a townhouse or a duplex is subject to the international, the residential code, the IRC, right? But anything more than that, that takes you into the international building code. And I know that probably sounds like a whole bunch of mumbo jumbo, but what you need to know is that right now, the, the way the state of, of housing and the housing industry has been, no pun intended, constructed is that the, the more dense you want to make the housing, the more expensive it's going to be because of code compliance, because we're moving from the IRC, the International Residential Code, to the IBC. And so what you're going to see in some of these ideas going forward, you'll see that a housing study is certainly advocated for. And there have been some conversations at the county level partnering with Leonard Town to, to do a housing study. You'll also see some other suggestions here and one of them relating to patterned zoning. And so if, if you're not aware of, of what that is, that's basically pairing a permit ready site and building designs with appropriate zoning and, and development regulations. And we're not there yet, right? We're not crafting updates to the CZO, that's not why we're here. We're also not working to, to update our local building code. But these kind of concepts are, are things to keep in mind as we, as we move forward. So you'll notice that some of these policies, and we'll just look at, at the first one, have, some of them have no action items because they've either not been developed or I wouldn't say they haven't been developed and we're not going to be able to develop action items for each of these policies. But this particular one you'll see does have four action items. And a lot of them, I think, goes back to understanding what we have and then tracking what gets built. And that's something that you all have commented on. And so that's action 1.1.3, track successful housing development. And so certainly being more data driven is something that we strive to do and that will sort of help us to evaluate as we move into the implementation of a plan, whatever that may look like, to make sure that, that we're trucking in the right direction. I know that was a lot of information and we can certainly kind of launch into each of the policies. I don't know, Mr. Chair, how you want to do this. I'm happy and I'm sure, you know, Clarion to, to take questions, to offer feedback, ideas, thoughts. So it's really up to you on how you want to, to sort of structure this part of the discussion. We can go over each of the action items. You can provide suggestions, guidance, or say we think that's really dumb and you should remove that. And, you know, we can, we can certainly do that. So however you want to provide us feedback and, and comments, we're certainly open to it.
Does anybody have anything on what just came by?
Just real quick, I don't know if it belongs here or elsewhere, and I may have seen it as an adjustment in some of the documentation, but what about a meeting, an action to, you know, meet with local builders to.
That's in here?
That's in there, okay.
Yep.
I thought I saw it somewhere in there, but I wasn't sure. So, you know, as long as it's in, in here somewhere.
It is in here somewhere and if someone finds it faster than I am.
I know it's, like I said, I, we can, we'll hit it when we get there.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a question about process? Some of these actions, you know, state like waiving transfer, the transfer of the, the TDRs. And I don't, I've gone through them all and I mean, that one hit me like, what? Because I personally don't agree with that to that extent. But what do we do as far as the process is concerned that, to determine that the board is all in favor of something you put in here? I mean, I guess what's the process for us to?
So what the process, I want to make sure that I'm understanding your question, Patty. So you're saying, okay, so if there's words in here that we don't like and we want to strike, how do we do that? And then what kind of happens next? What happens if we don't strike something? What if we put something in? What goes on as far as adoption of the comprehensive plan and the text that's here? Is that what your question is?
Well, my, it's basically focused right now on the information that you have presented here.
Correct.
And, you know, we all had the opportunity, I hope, to review it before today. So how do we vote? Yeah, or not a vote, is it a vote?
So I think we're, right now, we're, we're looking for perhaps some consensus, some, some direction to say, oh, I mean, I guess you can leave that in there, but I'm not sure that, that I personally support that item, right? Nobody has to vote on anything, nothing is, is formal at this point. This is just, you know, guidance, direction and, and feedback for us. So, and just because something is in here as something to be explored, it doesn't make it mandatory and we must do it tomorrow.
So what I'm understanding is if we come up with ideas that we're, we're giving the information we have today, Leanne's and.
Jasmine, yeah.
Jasmine, I'm sorry, Jasmine. They're, they're pulling all this in.
Sure.
And then on the next, I'll say, set of sheets that we have, that it's all going to be encompassed in.
The, the real first draft.
The real first.
Yep. That's how this works.
So today is, today is a, not a finalized, but it's, it's a, okay, I got an idea for this and like to have that thrown in there and, and I'll say like reducing parking. Well, that, that didn't go over very well. So, you know, that's, I'm sure they picked up on, I'm sure Jasmine took a big magic marker and put right through that. Didn't need a highlighter.
She got her shredder out and I saw her do it.
No highlighter, just used the magic marker on that one.
I'm sorry, I had to step out of the room when we started talking TDRs. But it's almost like my question earlier about meeting with developers. This kind of addresses that generally speaking is like, you know, either award bonus densities or what other things can we do to reduce the cost? And in my opinion, I, I wouldn't want to take out considering waiving TDRs until we know what options we really have. So having it in here as a point of discussion and a point of discussions if we ever have the meetings with, you know, developers, doesn't mean we do it, it just means we talk about it a little bit more.
That's correct. And actually what, what would really happen is you'd have this stuff in here, you would, let's just say, approve it as part of your comprehensive plan. Then where the rubber really meets the road is in updates to the, to the CZO. And that's where you get down to brass tacks. But this is just creating a menu of options to help propel the county forward. And I don't know what that means because I don't particularly feel like we're stuck in any kind of way. So there's not necessarily anything wrong and broken that we need to fix, right? That's certainly not what we're hearing from the community. I think what we're hearing is that for the most part, and there are, you know, some, you know, little blips here and there, but for the most part, people are, are pretty happy with the, the work options that are available. People are pretty happy with the, the shops where they can, you know, dining. Lord knows, I think people are, are feeling like they're, they have enough, you know, car washes and, and gas stations now. But I think most people are saying, we like things how, how they are. But leaving language in here doesn't mean that it becomes law overnight. It's certain, it is a point of discussion, provides opportunities to explore when you get into the adoption process of what would be an, an update to, to the zoning ordinance, if that helps.
And we have to be careful too, because incentivizing in terms of like TDRs, for instance, that has an impact on the budget, the county's budget.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, you, you got to look at what's the impact of these incentives to the county? Like, you know, reducing their property taxes, that has an impact, so.
For the long range down the road.
Yeah.
If you, they transfer TDRs, what's, you know, what could, I don't know. I don't think we have enough information.
I don't either. It's just things like that.
Well, that's what this is, it's a gathering, so.
And my gathering, I've talked to people, they don't need any more gas stations and they certainly don't want any more building. So I'm going to get that in there real quick. I don't know who you've been talking to, but.
People feel like we have enough of those things.
Oh, they definitely feel like we have enough.
That's what the community has been saying.
Let's put that in there too.
Well, we are dependent on, on our vehicles for sure to, to, to get around it. I don't see that changing.
I think that's one thing too. It's, it's all well and good to put theory on piece of paper, but you have to understand it's just a theory. Because like Howard was saying, we live in the country, we need a car. So getting rid of parking places, parking spots, excuse me, to me is just not even an option. I mean, we have more than two cars in one house, most all of us. I think that's, I think we have to take into consideration the way people live in this county.
Indeed.
Not the way other people would like to see us live.
Yeah, no, and I don't, and I don't, I don't get the sense that, that anyone's trying to, to do that. Where I think these are just the options that are available. And once you move forward with the zoning ordinance rewrite, which is, you know, a little bit more than I can wrap my brain around on a Friday afternoon. But, but those things will be coming next. And that's when you'll really debate the merits of, of certain decisions and, and what that might look like. So this is just kind of putting some tools in the toolbox. But we're, we're going to be building, you know, retooling it in some kind of way in, in the months and years to come.
Jessica, I have one more quick comment.
Yeah.
I understand what Patty's saying and I liked your comment about you're looking, we're looking for a consensus of the verbiage of, of all this. But the whole plan is important, but housing is a really always been a, kind of like parking, housing's always been a stickler for people, you know, because of all the different terms and where they're going to live and can they afford it. And I, I know it's time consuming, but I would think if we're looking for a consensus, we should be taking our time as, as, as a board in a meeting with a consultant and going through each action 112, 113. I'm not saying right this second, but.
Well, no, this, this is the time.
If we get to three months down the road and we've got the housing and the water and sewer and this and that and this and that, trying to look at everything at one time, I think is going to be very.
Overwhelming.
Confusing. Kind of like when we, you wasn't here yet, but when, wasn't there a rewrite of some of the zoning ordinance? Nine or 10 years ago, we had the sessions behind your office back in there. And we went through every single thing and they did a consensus of.
Line by line.
Line by line, this is what we like, this is what we don't like of the, of the, of the members of Lugham and, and us. So I like to say, I know it's a, I'm not trying to add more work. And I think it's been a tedious thing to go through. And some of the paragraphs may be rather easy to, to get through. But that's just my, as one person's, I'm not trying to add more work to you guys, of course, or us. But, you know, the housing is where I would like to spend. And I know we had these packets for a few days and stuff and I looked at them as I always do my stuff. But till we get talking about stuff and understanding each one by you guys' explanation and our explanation, it's kind of hard to decipher.
No, I, I understand that.
So that's just my, what I think we could do on some of it, but it's up to the chair and.
And I'm certainly happy to do that.
You guys and stuff.
It was something that we envisioned.
Everybody feels about that, but.
No, it was actually what we had envisioned, that's why the materials are provided. We have actually tons of copies on, on both sides. We were envisioning and prepared to go line by line. And that's why I said at the outset, these are two pretty hefty documents and topics that we're talking about. And so next week, we only have one new topic to talk about. So don't feel rushed now. If it turns out we need to schedule more work sessions, I mean, that, that's what we need to do. So I want you to take your time and really delve through each of, each of these goals, each of the policies and each of the actions. And you may propose actions that aren't on here. That's fine, let's have those conversations, that's what these work sessions are for.
I don't want to add words for everybody else up here, that was just my thinking that we, I think we need to go through these, you know, somewhat a little slower than we're.
That's fine.
Kind of re-reading them, it's just my, my opinion.
All right.
It's either that or, I mean, I agree with you.
Where at the end, we're going to have a stack of, of all the stuff to try to do.
And that's the point I'm trying, I was trying to make here is that.
I think that's what you were saying is let's kind of go through them now, take out what we, or. Do a consensus of what we don't like, what we may have won in there, so.
Sure, sure.
Or to make it go, I mean, to be more efficient, maybe we just say, okay, let, anybody got any problems with policy 11?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's do it.
All right, anybody got a problem with policy 11? Mr. Chair? Excuse me?
Does anybody have any, any thoughts or additions to that? We're going over it a little bit.
We did that one.
Action item 111. All right, action 121.
112.
112.
You know, I don't have that and y'all were talking about that a minute ago.
You're missing page eight.
I'm missing the, I'm missing page eight. And I was like, oh, I missed it. That's why I kept looking over to it.
Is that what you were doing?
I wasn't trying to sneak a peek, but I was like, you kept saying that number and I was like, you know, what's Patty saying there? No, it, it didn't. Thank you, man.
Oh, yeah, that's how you got to 121.
Well, a lot of times, I can tell you at work, when I make big things, sometimes Mr. Xerox doesn't spit out everything you're supposed to spit.
Indeed. Well, clearly that happens in Lugham too.
Somebody else is reading page eight right now.
Moving back, okay. Yeah, I feel better now, because I was like, I didn't see that. Action item 112.
I think we need to do it.
Do we want, do we want to think about getting a housing work group? Or we're going to have hard enough time with this group?
So, so I do want to keep in mind, this is something that is, you know, future looking. So if you think it's an option that should be available to the county in the future, you'll, you'll leave it in. You don't have to work, you don't have to work out the fine details of, oh gosh, when should we start that, right? This is, this is just the document to get the conversation started.
I think we need one.
I think we need to leave it in there.
It's one of the most important things, I mean, there's many important things, but it's one of the most important things we can do.
And that's our, one of our largest drivers of economic development.
This is one of the places where we could have developers plus community working together.
Exactly.
That's where I think that should be heavily considered.
Yes.
113, to track successful housing development.
Didn't we do that in the past, like I believe when Wildwood was built? I mean, they were a war, I mean, I know they won awards and for leaving the trees and, you know, things like that. Is that, is that related to what we're talking about here?
I thought it was more development, more missing. Collaboration with, for instance, the base or with other large businesses around here that might have an impact.
Yeah.
To put their two cents worth in, is that what it means?
Yes.
And I think we should keep it.
What else?
I think it's good.
Okay. Jessica, you want to do this or you want me to do it?
You're doing a fine job, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, I'm going to get another mint.
It was good to.
Action item 114, the award bonus densities for the provision of workforce and affordable housing. That was sort of like what I was saying, what, what can we do to, to enhance that? So we've, we've kind of already gone to.
Plus, this is an existing, isn't it? It's been in there.
So it is, except I, I'm not sure the part about.
So, it is, except I, I'm not sure the part about completely waiving TDRs is in there, you do get a bonus to where you don't have to provide all the TDRs you would have to provide normally, right?
But it does say, consider waiving TDR requirements in growth areas.
That's like zero.
Right.
Right, but this is just, and keep in mind, that's just for workforce and affordable, however, it still has, in this document, it still has affordable to households earning 110% of area median income or less, and you've seen what that means for the workforce that you've had in here, and that still is a market rate.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I don't know if you want to consider changing that number or not.
Number one, I liked your recommendation on the TDRs, when you said you could add more, you could, instead of five.
Whereas four TDRs gets you five.
I think that's better than saying, I waived the whole.
So, if you want to give more of a density bonus, instead of waiving them, that's something that would need to be looked at when we do the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, now I believe it's one per lot, you could do something more than that, but you would do that when you look at Schedule 32.2.
Okay.
But you all generally agree, though, to have this roundtable discussion.
Yes.
That's mentioned here, to get those conversations started.
Right, yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if you want to take a look at this 110%.
Yeah, I'm not sure I get.
I think we, yeah, I don't think I agree with that one.
I'm not sure I get that, it's not sinking in, so this is, yeah, 110% of the area median income.
Just to share, that's the, that was a carried forward from currently adopted plan, the definition of workforce housing, if the front is 110% of area median income, but you could definitely suggest taking a look at that to see if that's an appropriate kind of, you know, range of price points to be looking at.
Yeah, I think we should, because doesn't that infer that we're going to continue to see housing that's what we've been looking at, upper threes, low fours, so I'd like this number to be revisited here.
Because what they're saying is, it's 10% over the median.
There you go.
And so, do you have suggestions on what that number would look like, or do you need to see some more information, do you need some more time to think about it, because this one's a big one, you know, when, as Brandy indicated, when you start moving towards the update to your comprehensive zoning ordinance, all information as it relates to workforce housing is going to point right back to this 110%, so it's a big deal, so if you need.
I think we need more data.
Yeah, I need to know something more than this, but maybe some recommend, could get some recommendations, but remember, what we're trying, I think, trying to address here with even considering some of these options, is that 35% of the people here in the county that can't afford to buy a starter home, so, you know.
That's another question, too, for those on TV.
Our consultants, yeah.
Our consultants. Is the page four data household or individual, like the median income, is that a person, a household?
That first bullet.
Yes.
We're talking about the median income, so that's household, median income, expenses.
Okay, that wasn't.
For 2023, I believe, yeah, 2023.
That needs to be, you need to make sure that's in there.
Spell that out about the household.
Because that makes a big difference, because.
It does.
We can definitely clarify household, median income. One thing I was going to offer for action 114, where we're talking about the, looking at the TDRs and the roundtable discussion and the definition of workforce housing, you know, one way to attempt this would be to sequence some of these actions, so 111, that's on page seven, talks about the housing study, I think that very well could be the vehicle by which you consider what the definition of workforce housing is, that you want to be targeting within the county, and be, you know, supporting and creating incentives to support that kind of development, so that's one way you could go about it, is using that first action to help do that more robust housing study analysis and determine in that process, which range of incomes are we really trying to target based on, you know, the types of jobs we want to promote here, and the types of housing options that are available today, and incomes that those workers earn in those different households, so that's one opportunity for how to do that, there could be other, if you wanted to expedite 114, you know, ahead of a potential housing study, there could be some other ways to look at that, but that's, I just wanted to offer that, sequencing might help in terms of that, and the language could be changed in 114 to essentially kind of point to that study as guidance for the target range of incomes you're trying to create housing for.
But that delays everything, do you know what, I don't know.
It maintains the status quo for now.
Correct. It would just put a delay unless we knew that we could get that study done within a certain timeframe.
Yeah, and so, I guess we could reach out to DED and sort of ask them what their timeframe was for completion of that, they will be coming to you at the end, oh, now you've done it, but anyway, so, DED staff will be here and might be able to lend their voices to timing and sequencing of these items, but I see that our esteemed deputy county attorney is here.
Not to press the finger on the scale too, too heavily here, but I want to reinforce something that Jessica just said, obviously, the comprehensive zoning ordinance flows from the comprehensive plan, and it's a requirement of state law that the comprehensive zoning ordinance conform with and for therer the comprehensive plan, so if you pick a number, and food for thought, this isn't a final decision, you make no commitments right now, but if in the final comprehensive plan, you do pick a number, 110%, 100%, 80%, whatever it might be, we are stuck with that number until there's a further amendment to the comprehensive plan, so if the study comes back, and for whatever reason, because land is more expensive, because labor is more expensive, because materials are more expensive now than they were 15, let alone 30, 40 years ago, developers just can't build a house realistically for a certain amount of money, but we're stuck because we went with 75% or 80% of area median income earlier in the process, I'm stuck with having to write and enforce a CZO that uses that number and carries that number further, even if the housing study contradicts it, just food for thought at 3:24 on a Friday afternoon.
It's timing, dear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Doesn't a high percentage of the houses, townhouses, houses whatever built in the last few years, kind of fall under the workforce housing in any way, price-wise, model-wise?
It does now, because they're about 400,000, give or take.
That's what I mean, so everything now, in the last few years, is kind of in there anyway.
Under this percentage?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wanted to add for 114, another way for density bonuses for affordable housing could be for intra-family conveyance, or family conveyance, for like a sibling, a brother, a sibling, a child, a parent, nephew, the ability to give land to somebody free and clear is, I mean, such an equity-building tool that, I mean, for people to obtain housing, and I mean, I'm not talking about a large number, but maybe, maybe one right per parcel that has already exceeded its density, or something like that, could be a way to do it.
Good point.
And in terms of like the waiving the TDRs, it may not be the approach we would want for a certain type of affordable homes, maybe the waiving of TDRs would be just excluded to like 55 and older communities, and maybe workforce housing is used at another area or another tool in the toolbox, so to speak, but, yeah, could, yeah, could, and would be my only hesitance of like taking it out entirely.
We're waiving, right?
Yeah.
Put stipulations to criteria.
I do like adding the family conveyance, because that's always been an issue in St. Mary's County, family wanting to be able to give family land, and it becoming an issue.
And you could put the, you could put restricted covenants on it, that says if this home is, and I'm not sure if it needs to be an end for the covenants, but if this home is sold for, you know, out of the family in 10 years, 20 years, or what have you, then TDRs need to be applied to the property, or away, so it just, so it is able to stay family property, and, you know, it's not necessarily a get out of jail-free card to just start subdividing land again.
Yeah, got you. Good, good suggestion.
They are great.
If we don't like the word waiving of TDRs, you could put reducing, you know, reduction, you know, or, could be a way to reduce something instead of waive, it's, I don't know how that would work in the first place, but.
Jasmine's going to have to work some magic on this one.
And I would just kind of advise that this, the intent here is that this is an action that then would be implemented after adoption of the plan, so there is the intention that there's another process to more closely look at exactly how this would be defined and play out and be articulated in the CZO, so it's not like this is the only, you buy at the apple, you have another option when you're actually implementing the action.
Policy 12, to foster the development of senior housing options.
I think they're all good.
Okay, evaluate expedited review process for senior or age-restricted housing developments.
I like that, we are getting older, you know, but, you know, I think it's, I see that it's a new action, but.
I don't see why we expedite that and try not to expedite everything, you know, all the permits for me, I mean, I'm sure it's just as much work for the staff to look at that plan as it would be for if, you know, we wanted to build 12 townhouses, so.
Yeah, I don't want to bring up this, but sometimes periodically, it's not a bad idea to look at your entire process and see what you can do to streamline that process, because the process itself costs developers money, because it's going to be, they're holding up contracts, they're delaying doing whatever, so if we're going, like Joe, like you were saying, if we're going to expedite this, maybe we just need to look at the overall process, it's the consideration, to look at what it takes to get something through county processes, you know, when it comes to building.
Well, and we do have to be careful with expedited review rights, so lots of jurisdictions all over the country have some sort of permit expedite process for certain types of development, whether it's housing, whether it's, you know, commercial space, based on the number of employees that they're, you know, going to bring in, or the tax, the commercial tax dollars that they're going to bring in, but I will tell you, the workload that my staff experiences on a daily basis is quite a lot, and so I would exercise caution when we're talking about offering expedited review to one group of, I'm going to say, uses or occupants or occupiers of space, because the last thing that I think you want is a bunch of, you know, staff running around, you know, just being completely overburdened, where the important questions aren't being asked, so there is a little bit of a give and take there, but I think that's why it says evaluate the concept of an expedited review.
Or maybe the action is, and maybe if you even talk to your own staff, is maybe an action or a related action is streamline, evaluate your current process review to see where it may be streamlined to be more efficient, is another possibility of something that could be looked at.
Yeah, I don't like that 121 at all, myself, but.
121.
Action 121, the one we just spoke about, I mean, it's specifying that we would evaluate expediting only this type of permitting, and like Jessica said, they're already, I mean, I'm sure every agency is overburdened and doing exactly what they can when they can, so, to all of a sudden say, forget about the mother ten plans on your desk, we want you to look at this one, it doesn't seem like that would be beneficial to the county.
Well, there would certainly need to be a broader discussion as to, okay, if there is an expedited review for certain kind of projects, how do we create a standard to determine who gets expedited review and who doesn't? And oftentimes, you know, economic development departments, you know, certainly weigh in, and, you know, your local jurisdiction will say, you know, for these certain projects, they are of such, you know, critical importance to the county, that we think, you know, they should be eligible for a permit expedite process, and that's something that's determined on a case-by-case basis by people that are certainly more adept at economic development than I, so you're saying, though, Mr. Van Kirk, that you would want to remove this action item?
I think it would be detrimental to the entire review process if you leave one group getting preferential treatment on the permitting, I mean, that's just.
With the word expedited and anything else behind it, it sounds like that certain group is getting, you know, front door treatment.
Well.
Well.
Oh.
Yeah, if we take that out, then I'd want to put something in about taking a step back and reviewing our own internal processes.
Which I will say, we do regularly in our office, that's why we see some of the changes that you've seen, for example, amendments to the, and I don't want to open up this wound at the moment, but we streamlined what needs to come before you for a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment, because we looked at the process and said, well, this doesn't really make sense that we do it this way, so we stopped doing it this way, so those things we're evaluating, certainly on an annual basis, but in real time, so please just know that if you strike one thing, it doesn't mean that we're going to stop looking at how to do things, you know, smarter and more efficiently, we're public servants, and that's what we're asked to do.
That would be up to your department.
Yeah.
That's, that part of it, that's yours and your employer.
Oh, boy.
Oh, look, we have our director from Aging and Human Services that may have some thoughts and feelings.
Good afternoon, everyone, so as you're discussing this, so I'm Lori Jennings-Harris, I'm the Director of the Department of Aging and Human Services for St. Mary's County, and as you are discussing this item, I'm recalling the reason why I think it may have been added, and what I'm thinking about is a discussion with a member of my staff who is thinking about the possibility of having, talking about aging in place, so having older adults who may be in need of, for example, a wheelchair ramp, or to allow them greater accessibility, to allow them to live independently for a longer period of time, so there's discussion about, and this is what my department is about, helping people remain independent in the community for a longer period of time, so it's not to shirk the responsibility of anyone trying to get everything pushed through the process, or providing preferential treatment to anyone, but if we're talking about helping an individual or groups of individuals remain independent as long as possible, them being able to have accessible housing, or being able to live independently, timing is, and the amount of time that it takes is important for perhaps an older population or an older adult, was not to push forward, or to suggest preferential treatment, but to help older adults remain independent for a longer period of time, which means helping them to have access to whatever they need to do that, just for perspective.
So, we're really talking about permits that are required simply for reconstructing some part of your home to accommodate, I mean, that's an example, right?
Exactly.
Right, a renovation.
Yeah.
Exactly, I think that's where that.
That's what this says.
Well, that's not, that's not here.
Housing development.
Developments, that's right.
Yeah.
Developments, that's right.
Yeah, I agree.
That's not how this reads.
I agree with what you're saying, yes.
But I didn't want, that's not how this reads at all, but just to give some perspective about the discussion.
Right.
So this has to do with, where is it? The development of senior housing options. So, no, I'm sorry. Evaluate expedited review process for senior or age restricted housing developments. But just to give some perspective about where that language could be used and why it may be used. So in the county, there has been discussion about housing for older adults for a long time and especially in the northern part of the county. So if there is discussion about that, the perspective that I just provided may be helpful in terms of the development of housing for older adults.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
So we could take out restricted housing development.
Just needs to be reworded maybe.
Yeah, maybe you just need to reword it.
And so what would be the, I'm gonna say, suggestion or direction? Because I can rewrite this completely, to say something completely different, but it may not be what you're looking for.
Well, I mean, the title is still expedited review process for senior or age-related housing developments.
Correct.
I mean, that's the problem.
New construction of new communities.
The whole paragraph is about new construction.
Correct.
What Ms. Harris is saying, I agree with on wheelchair ramp permits, widening doorways for people so they can stay in their homes. That would be great to expedite things like that.
So if we got rid of housing developments, but where it's more permit and making existing housing appropriate for someone to age in place, that type of phrasing would work?
Yes.
Would work for me, yeah.
Okay.
It's very important with senior citizens.
Sure.
Having come from a group that for 30 years, 35 years, we worked on homes and I'll say 50% of our load each year was handicap ramps.
Yep.
Enlarging doors for wheelchairs, making countertops, accessible sinks, things like that. Christmas in April did, you know, that was a big, big chunk every year. I'm sure it still will stay that way. But that was, and we had very good interaction with the county in order to get that done.
All right. All right. So now I think I've got the direction, at least on that point. Thank you.
So you just want to take out the word development? Is that what you're...
No, I think the whole paragraph needs to be rewritten.
Okay.
The title and the paragraph.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're not talking about building in Ashbury or someplace like that?
No, I think we're making, trying to make existing housing.
I think Jay has a question.
Is there currently any form of expedited review process for any development plans currently in place?
No. Everybody that comes in gets the same treatment.
Okay.
Sorry, I was gonna ask you, you made a remark about if the Economic Development Commission comes before you and says, this is a big deal and this is a priority, does that not skip to the top of the line?
So that's, I'm not aware that that's ever happened.
Never happened.
And I will just say, in other jurisdictions where I've worked and certainly around, I'm gonna say around the country, and Leanne might be able to speak to this a little bit better, but when that happens, it's usually through a public process, right? So the local governing body would put together some sort of a resolution that says, hey, we prioritize these certain things. And if a, I'm gonna say, a department within the local government determines that these certain factors are met, then, you know, they qualify to have, let's say, expedited review. You'd usually see some language in that says, but, you know, you can't have any more than, let's say, seven to 10 projects on that expedited review list at any one time because at some point, we're all running around with, like chickens with their heads cut off. So we don't have anything in place now, but certainly that's something that could be explored by some folks down the line. Jay, did that get your question? Okay.
I wasn't sure if, like, floating zones or anything like that had a, had an incentivized review time or not currently.
Okay. Policy 1.3, ensure age and ability friendliness through accessible designs. Any comments on that?
Kind of tied into what we were just talking about a little bit.
Pretty self-explanatory, yeah. Okay. 1.4, monitor the county's housing stock to ensure choices for all income levels. Maybe we can get with the Zillow company.
And that was carried over, right?
How would, how would we do that now? How could that happen?
We could look up on like, you said on Zillow and look at what's for sale in the county or have a Realtor, I mean Connor could keep us up to date.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, he could look it up in the MLS, could keep it up to date every month, week.
And I'll be honest with you, I don't know what economic, the Department of Economic Development might do because sometimes you'll find as part of, you know, driving economic development and strengthening economic development within a jurisdiction, some of those departments do maintain that kind of data because it's the information that they put forward when they're trying to lure a new business to the area. Or if a business is thinking about expanding, hey, here's, here's what our records and data show. And so certainly we could find out.
Could you all approach them about that?
Absolutely, we could ask.
Yeah. I think we need to do something because how do you know if we implement some of these other things, are we making progress, are we not? Is everything remaining the same unless we, you know, have a sense of what's out there and monitor it periodically?
And then adjust permitting and incentives to maintain an appropriate balance of housing types.
Like I said, all that stuff's existing. I don't know how you do it, but it's a, it's one of the good things it's supposed to be, but I don't know how you ever, because it's all just, I mean, it goes by the economy and the state of the, of the market, how everything's running. Like right now, I know Connor told Howard and I, we was talking Monday, the housing is really low right now, a couple hundred in St. Mary's County.
Yeah, they're not a lot of inventory.
Usually four, five hundred or something. So it's really low right now, the number of units available. And I think that was just sales, I'm not sure about rentals. But usually when one's low, the other one's typically, typically low. So I don't know how we would ever, you know, the balance to keep that there is really hard. It's just economy driven.
It's a carry forward, so I'd like to leave it in.
Yep.
To give us that flexibility to, depending on what happens.
Be part of that study too.
Yeah. It's all related, yeah.
That 1.4 is all together.
Yep.
Okay. 1.5, encourage the inclusion of accessory dwelling units in apartments.
Accessory dwelling.
It's a good one.
I'm not sure, is that just like having an in-law?
Yeah.
Okay.
Goes a long way as long as you got the right relative. I'll hear about that today.
Yeah, you will.
I love them all. I have them all in my backyard. And I would too.
I know that hasn't always been easy in my neighborhood.
Are you good with 1.5?
I'm still on 1.5. In my neighborhood, they weren't allowed. A gentleman I know recently built a house and needed...
Through your covenants?
I don't know where the not allowed was for, but they put a physical structure in for, I think, the kid, you know, subset of their family. And, but they couldn't hook up any of the plumbing or any of the whatever with it. So they at least got the physical structure built. Now, this is, I'm going back a year or two ago when it was done, but I remember being kind of surprised at that since that seemed to be the trend. And it might be my neighborhood covenants, I don't know, because I don't have to follow them. So I don't pay attention to mine. So it was interesting, it was Riverside Farms.
Okay, Riverside Farms.
Well, it's funny that you should mention that because if you look on to Action 1.5.1, you're talking about water supply and toilet flushing.
It might be.
Is Riverside Farms connected to public sewer? So no, so that's...
No, we're all sceptic.
And if you have a...
Well, and sceptic.
If you have a drain field that's, I'll say, designed for a two-bedroom house, building an accessory dwelling with another bathroom is not gonna, not gonna pan out unless you board one of those other bathrooms up and that's not gonna go. I have heard that suggested. I'll take one of them out of the house if I can do it out here.
They board it up until the inspector comes through and checks.
We wouldn't know anything about that, Mr. Van Kirk.
Yeah.
I've read about it. Well, I have never read it at all, so it's not...
I've read about it in the comic book. I've seen it done in practice. Okay.
That's a great idea.
1.6, encourage efficient design to reduce costs and impacts of the development, of development.
We're good with 1.5.1?
Yeah.
Didn't we just kind of skip?
Yeah, we skipped it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we need it.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'm caught up.
1.6, anybody have anything? I mean, in this day and age, I think they would all be efficient designs. You gotta save any possible way you can.
Well, I think he's talking about, like you say, he's talking about the one thing that was in part of the other thing about the reduction of open space.
Clustering.
Clustering and things like that. So it could...
Retain open space in development from 50% to as low as 20% in exchange for construction of workforce or affordable housing.
There it goes.
That's...
Waves into everything we've been talking about.
We talked about that.
It could be reduction or mitigation.
Yep.
Offsite somewhere else, like, or if there was a fund to contribute to.
All right. So how would you like that to read?
Clustering of homes to reduce...
To be able to retain some open space, but we just have to figure out, and I mean, we're not here today to figure out the percentage of what we want to do with that.
You want your usable open space. So this is talking about undeveloped.
Yeah.
Again, so you want it to say undeveloped.
Undeveloped, yeah.
Are you okay with the percentages?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
Something we're gonna have to look into.
But keep in mind that this is in the development district.
It is in.
Correct. This is talking about the development district. So you're going from 50% in the development district to 20%.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's where we want to develop.
Yeah, that's where you want your development.
I know, but...
But we have that already, don't we, in some places?
Some places, but lots of, lots of them are, like the RHRM, they're asking for 50% undeveloped open space. So what that leaves you, if you reduce it, if you, if you allow them to reduce their undeveloped open space to 20%, you could, in theory, get more usable open space.
And they could build more units.
They could.
That's what, and that's what we were talking about earlier.
Correct.
Ways to maybe enhance, like Howard said, of reducing things where they could build, instead of building four, they could build seven.
They could. And they can also provide the parking without having to ask for, say, a variance.
Yeah.
Because they have to reduce the undeveloped open space even more to give you the parking.
Yep.
50% of undeveloped, okay.
Yeah, correct. So it's not your usable open space, it's the undeveloped open space.
In a development district.
In the development district.
I think we need to keep it. What, you know, I like what it says.
You mean, keep where we can reduce it to 20?
Right.
Yeah, yes.
But I think it should probably say undeveloped open space to...
Yeah, clarify.
But I'm a little concerned about going from 50 to 20. I can't, I can't picture the impact of...
Well, then why don't, why don't you come in maybe next time and bring in a housing development, even one that isn't real? That's probably better.
Yeah, so we'd have to, yeah, I was gonna say, we'd have to ask someone.
I can't visualize it.
Make up your, make up your own, yeah.
An engineer if we could use their plans and just lay out.
And just have a plan that shows, okay, this is what is allowed by law right now with the 50%. This is what 35% will look like, this is what 20% will look like. Give us a, give us a incline.
Yeah.
And that can be nothing fancy, just, okay, we got 20 acres.
No, just a piece of paper going out.
We have 20 acres in the development district. If they had to do the 50%, what could we build? Like Chairman Thompson said, if we did 35%, what could they build? If we did 20%, what could they build? Be helpful for us, I think, to see the numbers.
Give us a slide. Because it's in the development district. I mean, that's...
Yeah, it'll help you to visualize what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think it boils down to, we're trying to make things more affordable for more units.
Yeah. And we've got an expert in our office that will be able to draft that at some point in this upcoming, yeah? In this upcoming week? Yeah, no.
Randy's gonna change it to development.
That's the proposal, that's the proposal.
Remember just talking that already we have people coming that's trying to put too much.
Too much on a little...
On a piece of land.
On an acre of lander.
Sure, sure. You don't want that to happen.
Remember that other one.
There's gonna, there's still gonna be other parameters that are gonna keep that from happening, not just the undeveloped open space.
Right.
You're gonna have lot sizes. You're gonna have other things that are, other infrastructure even, that's gonna keep that from happening.
I just can't visualize the impact.
Gotcha.
Kind of like Jay said, would they, what would they do for that privilege of doing that? Would they mitigate somehow? Didn't you mention?
Yeah, I mean...
How that would work?
And that might be better addressed, like, in, like, APFO for, like, recreation and just, it would be like a fees and lo fund that gets contributed to, like, the most nearby public park. Or if there was a program that was like acquisition of lands for public parks or public lands or, and just a fund that it would contribute to. Just, well, in a, and then this one does say in a development district.
Well, yeah.
So, I mean, obviously not everywhere, but...
Okay.
But Patty, is your concern though, on not the lot layout of a particular site, but when you're kind of stepping back from it, what are the ramifications of doing this? Let's just say on traffic, for example. If we're, if we're shrinking some of these other requirements, then we're gonna be able to build, you know, more density into a particular housing development. And oh my gosh, that's all well and good for this particular site. But if we're doing that on sort of a broader scale in the development district, at some point, what do we do about the infrastructure? And one of the things that you all deal with at least twice a month is, you know, traffic concerns and public safety. And is that what you're getting at? Like, I don't really know if this is gonna be safe.
Exactly.
I can't visualize what this is gonna be on a greater scale.
And that's the point I used, is this safe? On the very first, when we start, talked about this.
Yeah.
It's on one of those pages. Safety issues. I don't know, question marks.
That's a good point because in the developmental district, that's where most of your failing intersections are.
Yeah.
So it's a good point.
That doesn't mean it's applicable to all, but to some, it could be detrimental.
Yeah.
Make sure State Highway knows that when we, if and when that was ever changed because, you know, the roads are okay.
And I believe this is for the construction of workforce or affordable housing. So this isn't for every development, correct?
Right.
No, it's...
Has to do with Annapolis.
All right. So, yeah, we can bring you in, you know, a couple of sketches next time, but I don't think that that gets to Patty's question about what this looks like on a broader scale. But we'll at least lay it out for you so you can see what that looks like.
I mean, y'all can do, do that work perfectly. I'm sure you can, but I mean, as far as...
But it's getting the state.
When we talk about traffic, that doesn't have anything to do with us. We know where that's gonna come from, so.
We'll be able to calculate, I mean, if there was gonna be 50 homes built, and you know, you usually say two, two cars per home, and now there can be 75 built. I mean, we can do the quick math and know that it's gonna be a lot more traffic in the peak hours. Of course, people going to work and coming. So we'll be able to look at that next week or whenever.
Yeah, we could do some more of this.
Have a little bit of a sense of what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we can actually take a look at the GIS and look at areas that aren't developed. So there's where this would be new development in the first place and maybe we could go from there. So...
And we have a traffic man here too, if we need some clarification with Mr. Mills. How you doing, sir?
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay.
Okay. Permit manufactured housing in all residential areas. Is there, are we not allowed to use manufactured housing in certain areas?
Well, we...
Because it's changed.
They were not permitted in all zoning, all zoning districts that permitted, that allowed residential dwellings. But now we have to.
Okay.
As long as they're converted to real property.
They can even be in like RNC now?
Correct.
Okay. They didn't used to be, right?
Correct. They were, they were only allowed by right in the RPD. Correct. They were, they were only allowed by right in the RPD. Um, and then you, you could create a mobile home park if you wanted to create a, uh, PUD, but, um, but now I think it is, is a House Bill, House Bill 538 allows all, all manufactured housing in any residential area, or any, any residential zoning district.
Or you could replace them years ago, one for one, if you had one prior to.
We do have that in our non-conforming, um, use section, that i- if you have an existing mobile home, you can replace it
Right.
with either a single wide or a double wide.
But now you don't even need that because of the House Bill.
Right, but it, it does have to be converted to real property, and Jessica can explain what that means better than I can.
Yeah, what does that mean?
But is that, are, are you comfortable with that policy?
They won't know what that means.
Yes.
What does it mean to be converted to real property?
Oh, John Hauser.
It's gotta be put on a foundation, or some sort of foundation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Taken off the wheels?
And they have to, they'll have to sign an affidavit and, yeah.
Yeah, I, um, the technical, the details kind of escape me, but I could look it up, but this bill, when it got through the General Assembly at the end, was pretty watered down. Basically, to be eligible for this exception, to make a manufactured home a mobile home under this state law, able to go anywhere any other residents can, you more or less have to convert that to a permanent fixture on the property and take away everything about it that is mobile. It may include a foundation, not, but basically, you nail that down, you make it a legal part of the land that can't be alienated it from that, alienated from it then on.
Okay, thank you. And the quality of manufactured homes has gone up quite a bit from what it used to be.
I mean, they, they.
They say it has.
You can, you can beef them up to, like, modular quality, but when you, by the time you beef them up to modular quality, you prob, you might as well just buy a modular at that point. Um, it's, uh, I, I mean, the per, the perimeter foundation, if you affix it to it, um, really, it's more for aesthetics and the fact that, I mean, you can't really take it out in a day, um, versus just like skirting foundation. Um, I mean, they're, they're a cost-effective product. Um, I think there's still a lot of constraints in lending-wise. Um, I, I mean, I know at one point, the best you were getting was like a 20-year fix, and they were at a, a significant higher um, interest rate, but, I mean, if you can obtain that house for 110,000, and if it's a 30 to 40-year product, I mean, a person goes through two of those in a lifetime. And I mean, sometimes that is all that, you know, people can afford.
Yeah.
On 1.8, provide quality housing and housing services to meet residents' needs.
Does this address Section 8 issue, housing? Is, is that what we're talking about here?
I don't think so.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, but does it include them?
It could.
It could. That are eligible for county support, quality housing services. How do we do that?
Oh, Lori. Would you, maybe, and certainly we can also have LeAnn come off of mute, too, but we're talking about, um, Policy 1.8, provide quality housing and housing services to meet residents' needs. So it says, for households that are eligible for county support, provide quality housing and housing services to meet resident needs with respect to accessibility, affordability, location, and diversity of cost. Um, and the question was, are we talking about Section 8, or is it something broader here? So, um, first, I guess, LeAnn, um, as a member of the consultant team, what were you all thinking here? And then does that track with what, what Lori has seen, um, as, as far as the needs and the services that, that her, uh, department provides to our, our residents?
So, this is a carry forward from the currently adopted plan. Our interpretation of this is that it's a broad policy that would probably be, um, inclusive of a lot of different types of services. So it could include services provided through public housing authority that could include the Housing Bachelor Program you mentioned, that other services, like, if there are, and I'm not sure if it comes through housing authority or another entity in the county, but if there are programs that support, for example, um, weatherization, um, other, you know, programs that provide supportive housing services to meet resident needs, whether folks need access to a housing unit, or if they need assistance within their existing housing unit where they are living. Um, so I'll, I'll stop there, but that, that's our interpretation based on what's in the current plan.
Could it also be provi, talking about a Meals on Wheels program and things like, like that?
Yes.
Okay, and Lori, what are your thoughts?
So, the term housing services is new to me.
Okay.
In terms, in terms of, um, housing for individuals, that may be a question better asked of the housing authority.
Okay.
But in terms of maintaining people in their home once they're in a home, because housing has been an issue, especially for older adults and the general population, um, in this county, but once they are in a home, if we're talking specifically about older adults, and they qualify and have a need, home-delivered meals may be an option, other in-home services may be an option for them as well.
And what about, um, trans, transportation, um, I'm gonna say paratransit or, or anything like that? I, I suppose that could also be considered as, as housing services. LeAnn, would that kind of track? Because housing services does seem to be quite broad.
Right.
Okay, so it could include all of those things. Okay. Um, Lori, just to put you on the spot here, are there other things that, other examples or more specific, um, items that you think we ought to put in here as we're talking about housing services that, that are things that should be provided or explored in the future? To keep folks, um, in their homes?
Uh, transportation, as you just mentioned, is a big one, uh, and it has been a big one for a long time, and there are a number of different mechanisms in the county to get people from point A to point B, and not speaking for any other department, um, Donnie's in the audience. There's free transportation for residents of the county now, which is great, I think. Um, there are a number of ways where older adults can receive transportation in the county. It, not all of the gaps are filled, but there's been an attempt over the years to try and fill those gaps, so an example would be the Senior Rides Program. That is through my department, the Department of Asian Human Services, and it's a volunteer-based transportation program where volunteers provide transportation to eligible older adults to medical appointments within the county, outside of the county, as well as to grocery stores, to run errands, things that people need to do and have in order to live. Um, and then there are other entities and organizations in the county that also provide transportation. Um, the Health Department is one, but, um, not speaking for any other agency, but there are parameters and criteria and.
Sure.
Eligibility requirements.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. I do have a question.
But now there's questions.
Yeah. Yeah, my question is, okay, everything we just talked about was really felt, fell into the category of housing services, it sounds like. Does the county provide support, and this is kind of a, out, just laying it out there for everyone, does the, does the county provide support as far as housing? Quality housing? Do we, do we have programs in place that you're aware of that gets people into homes?
I, I can't speak to that. Uh, the housing authority may be a better organization to have that question addressed to.
Okay. You know, when you were.
Go ahead.
When you were talking, it was making, I was thinking, and years ago, you would see, like, for instance, Cedar Lane, can I use that as an example? They had a pharmaceutical, uh, they had, they did have pharmacy in there. It wasn't manned 100%. But I remember that the pharmacies, pharmas, the pharmacists would take turns going in there, just like, um, and that's just one example, and I think that was removed. But they did have that at one time, and, um.
They moved it next door.
Did it, oh, yeah, right, they did. Uh, I guess my point here is, there's things like that, that we could, we could also say to a builder, if you accommodated that kind of a, a service within your, your complex, you would get X amount of incentives for doing that. Um, just a thought. Just like, you know, up in the city, you have all of that on the first floor, and their apartments are all for the aging. I mean, they have everything right there, they just take the elevator downstairs.
Yeah, right.
I'm, I'm envisioning that kind of a, uh, that kind of a setup for 1.8.1.
Like a beauty shop.
A beauty shop, yes.
That's what I was thinking.
Or a nurses, uh, uh, somebody that would be on duty all the time. You know, there are a lot of nurses that don't wanna work full-time. They might just say, I'll work a couple hours a day, and if you have four or five of them.
It doesn't work that way.
I'm just saying.
I, I mean, I see, I see the vision, uh, the things that would help people to remain in their home and live comfortably. And maybe we have a transportation component in our department. There are other resources in the community, but perhaps transportation to specialized doctors, um, dialysis. If there's a, um, and, um, housing for older adults, and there is a beauty parlor, which there is or had been in Cedar Lane, I don't know if it still exists.
I think it was there, too.
Mm-hmm, so a beauty parlor, barber shop, maybe pharmacy.
They, they volunteered, different beauticians, and barbers, too, would come in.
I mean, they still go in there, beauticians volunteer their time. There it is. Just ideas. That's what I think we need to rewrite this section, to accommodate what we really mean.
Yep.
Podiatrists go in there.
Yes.
They do. The podiatrists go in some of the places. If they had an exam room or designated space that could be multi-used for different people, different entities, that would be a nice.
Okay, all right, we've made some notes. Thank you, Lori, I appreciate your input.
Okay. I think we're getting ready to go into goal two. Did we go into 1.8.1 enough? I mean, what we all just did is that.
Yep.
Yep. We didn't do 1.8.1.
Okay.
1.8.
I kinda think we talked about it under.
Yeah.
1.8.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, under just services and stuff, so.
Okay. Goal number two.
How many goals is it?
100 and, no, I'm.
Y'all are, y'all are right on schedule.
All right, good.
We might not get to number two.
Goal number two. Encourage the maintenance and upkeep of existing housing. Enhance the livability of both existing neighborhoods and new housing developments by encouraging and fostering the maintenance and upkeep of existing housing. There's been organizations in the county that have been doing that, you know, for years, but I don't think the county itself is, you know, gets involved in that.
Let me read this real quick.
Go ahead.
Oh, this kinda goes back to what, what we talked about earlier, right? Incentivizing.
It is, and it's still in the construction, I mean, developers.
Mm-hmm.
Or construction companies going in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you, do you happen to know how, I believe, I wanna say, I, I might have the wrong developments, but there were certain apartment-built areas in Great Mills that were renovated, I wanna say Indian Bridge Apartments, or maybe the landings on Chancellor's Run Road, or whatever that group is right there, that I believe some developers and came in, and it was through some program, and fixed, you know, renovated those, and then the, the oversea and to ensure that maintenance is kept up, they're doing it. The county's not doing it, this American hair.
Done through grants, yeah.
Something like that.
That's right, the county's not doing it.
So, it's kind of back to the question is, is the county, and we don't know, I don't, is the county doing anything in this regard? Or is this area being delegated to the housing authority? I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Or if we could find out is, you know, what programs there are.
Right, I, I don't know the answer either, so we'll, we'll get that answer for you.
I don't think anybody's doing it except the individual homeowners. In, you know, I mean, in a single-family home, the housing authority's not gonna come in and tell me or you, hey, I want you to paint that shade green.
Oh, that's, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just talking about in individuals.
Right.
In, um, apartment complexes, I think they're pretty, pretty well taken care of by the owners, and most of them have a, um, I don't know what the name of it is, that maintain them, they come to this place, they take care of them. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know if this is talking about new housing developments, maintenance of upkeep of existing housing. I don't know how we do that.
I don't either. For example, there, I heard that there's going to be a new brick and mortar program of building houses in some green space in Lexington Park. And I heard this through the housing authority, and I don't know if that's accurate information or not. So, I, so what I'm seeing is, I hear this from the housing authority, because I've been talking to a couple other people, just because I work with them in other capacities, and we are sitting over here not knowing what, and if the county's doing anything, because it seems to operate separately.
Well, if they're proposing a new project, the housing authority, you're going to see it. It has to come in front of you.
And that would probably be something taken care of if the housing, if it's gonna be under the housing authority, but, you know, this doesn't necessarily say that. This is, to me, this is talking about new housing and existing housing that's throughout the county, I don't know. I mean, until it gets to the blight level, where the county steps in, there's a big, there's a big gap between what a person says is, oh, this is blight versus, I just haven't painted my shutters. So, I, I, I don't, it's a, it's a really hard, um, really hard goal.
New housing developments typically will have an HOA that will.
They do.
Make people keep, upkeep their houses to the best of their ability.
I don't understand why it's in, I, 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 I don't understand why the maintenance is in here.
Would the specific language help if there was ever, um, like facade, uh, grant programs available at the state level for residents of St. Mary's to qualify?
We could put something like that in there.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just asking, does this specific? I think LeAnn's trying to talk.
LeAnn, do you know if, if there's a grant available? I think she's muted. I think you're muted.
That's not helpful. No, no, you can hear me. Um, so, good question about the state grant program for facade improvements. I don't know the answer to that question, but what I can share is, I'm on the, um, St. Mary's Housing, the Public Housing Authority's website, and they do have programs for housing rehabilitation loans, weatherization assistance programs, there may be some others here that kind of fall under this bucket of rehabbing housing, incentives for rehabbing housing. So, um, I think there are, at least through the Public Housing Authority, some programs that are in place today to help with the, kind of the intent of this existing action. But we could also look to see if there are state facade program grants.
Um, I, I think there is a state facade program, I'm just not sure, I, I don't know if it's available to, uh.
For residential, you, right, so I know there's a facade improvement, um, grant available for commercial. People can apply through DED for commercial projects or buildings, but, yeah, I, I don't know about residential.
And I didn't know, like, language like this, if this would be added to the comp plan, if there was ever a, uh, let's say there was a grant that became available at the state level, um, if this would almost help it to where, uh, it was easy to establish a program, uh, to receive the state funds to get distributed to residents of St. Mary's.
If, if it's available, I, probably it could be added to this.
Mr. Hauser?
One other contribution I can make, of course, one of the other, one of my favorite hats to wear is code enforcement for the blight ordinance, for the livability ordinance, things like that. We do have an existing legal framework. What we've never had is the fun. funding to really implement this framework currently, but when we have a property owner who runs afoul, if one of those two ordinances gets the complaint and does not have the means or the ability, either the physical means or the financial means to pay for someone to take care of it, we are authorized to enter into voluntary remediation agreements or seek a court order to abate those conditions ourselves and remove the nuisance or perform the needed repairs directly. And with the property owner's consent in every case, without the property owner's consent, if it's bad enough where a court will order it. It's called, and the idea being that whatever cost the county would front eventually would be returned to the county when we get a lien on the property. If the property owner doesn't themselves eventually repay it, then the property, the money gets returned to the county inclusive any interest whenever the property would go to sale, one way or the other, assuming a priority enough and there's enough equity there to get it. Clean and lien programs like that exist in other counties, some successfully, some anemically so. What holds us back in St. Mary's County is, again, just a lack of funding and a lack of resources to front that money ourselves. I've been doing it for five years. I've got about 320 code enforcement cases under the belt. We've gotten three abatement orders in that time, just for some statistics and, you know.
Does that go through planning and zoning, the complaints?
Yeah, complaints go to land use and growth management. The inspections division operates under Lugum. They're one of the six units of Lugum.
Okay.
It only hits the county attorney's office if the citation and kind of the, basically if they got to go to court and there's just intransigent or a failure to basically resolve things with the inspectors, that's the only time it hits my desk. So, that 320 that I've been involved with personally, multiples, probably that land use and growth management is seen in the same time.
So, that's why, that's where we really need, that's where we focus from a land growth, comprehensive plan perspective, right? Is what, how it aligns to what you do, the requirements in the, in your office.
For blight?
Yeah.
Right now.
For maintenance. I mean, it's all kind of related.
But we'd like for it not to go that far, if we can incentivize people to maintain their
Yeah, but how do you do that?
Their dwelling, well, right.
Boy, isn't that what we're investigating?
Right, that's what we're trying to, to accomplish now.
Yeah, we're trying to say
Right.
we will do, or the county will do this, 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 and this to prevent it, right?
Trying to.
We'd like you to do it, the county. We'd like you to.
Please, yep.
I was just trying to get my head around why we have this in here.
To me, it's going to be a hard goal to reach.
Me too.
I just, you know, the enforcement of neighbors, HOAs, neighbors, things like that, then it goes to y'all and then, and then
And I don't think we can enforce HOAs, right?
We can't. The, not directly. That's the whole idea of HOAs and what was supposed to be the beauty of them, that it's a way where private citizens can take care of their own communities by their own standards without involving the oversight or the cost to local government. The reality is, sometime HOAs are unable or unwilling or just ineffective at doing themselves. Sometimes HOAs collapse, they fold in, folks in charge of HOAs, some run them rigorously, some do not. There's just inconsistent application across HOA standards. Some counties, and I am not at all advocating this, I'm going to repeat that, I am not at all advocating this, but just as the, out in the universe of possibilities out there, some counties will, and there's some pushes at the state level to get local, county, or even state oversight of HOAs, force them to certain standards, give them training, basically allow sort of a soft receivership to go over HOAs that aren't measuring up by their local governments. In drastic situations, the courts could step into to either reconstitute or take over an HOA and force it into actual receivership, but there's no great solution to a failing HOA that doesn't involve a public cost or obligations that just go unmet.
And you know, most of the old subdivisions that have HOAs, they're not even attached, they're not even recorded with the deed. Like, all the new ones now, I think, aren't forcible. I don't, I think they have to go to court. They're enforceable, but the old ones that everybody had to sign when he bought a house and stuff, there wasn't really even ever enforced. Who's going to enforce them? Just a little document like this handed to the person that says, "This is what we've been doing since 1965."
Or, or to say nothing of, we've got, it's common in St. Mary's County, you know, the waterfront communities, and I won't name any names. We can all think of a few that get platted out in the 20s and the 30s and the 40s before HOAs are this level of formal thing is a thing, thinking that, you know, these are going to be the next wealthy, you know, summer enclaves, the St. Michaels of, you know, St. Mary's County for DC and Baltimore. Rich folk, they never get baulked out. They don't do these things. And if they've got a civic association at all, the civic association is absolutely toothless and doesn't have any actual enforcement authority. That's another, you know, scenario we encounter pretty commonly. So, then we're just left with the blight ordinance.
I, this is a tough one.
Yeah, these items are already, let me see if I get this. These items are already in the comprehensive plan. If you look down at the sub-notes, 19, 20, 21, you know, referring to policy 8.2.1. So, I guess what we were doing here with this goal is just creating like a higher-level goal and then grouping these under the existing policies?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I guess nobody ever paid any attention to it, because we've never had any lengthy discussions on this. I mean, in the last one, we didn't. We probably just said, "Okay."
Looks good.
Looks good.
Well, I think it's one of them policies that it's, it's another thing that it's, like Mr. Hauser said, you know, most of the covenants are not enforceable anyway, so it's a really hard, unless they reach the level of not complying with the county blight ordinance, you know, lack of maintenance is not really, and nobody can do anything about it until it gets to a point where it's really bad. I don't know what the standards are, but it's, I think it's pretty bad before it gets to that. So, it's, it looks good on paper, but I think it's really a hard process to capture, to be able to, to correct it like it should be, like we'd all wanted to be corrected.
But you don't want to take it out. You want to be able to have access to, refer to a policy. Otherwise, why, you know, you said, then you used a word earlier, like, when you were talking about code enforcement or something like that. We need, we need a basis to which, we might not be able to do a whole lot, but if you have nothing, then you can't do anything, I think is how it works, so.
So, you want to leave those policies and actions in?
I would think so. It's just me, but.
What'd you say?
Do you, you want to leave policy 2.1 and the actions in?
I think that we should fix it.
How would you like to fix it?
Or get rid of it.
Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about the actual structures, not the language here. You're talking about
The whole section?
I'm saying we should rewrite this.
Okay.
Where it's at least given us an action to make a difference. I mean, we can't do any, that's all I'm saying. Why have it in there?
Mr. Hauser, can you come up here a second?
It's, nobody's ever done anything and, well.
How much, how much juice does a homeowners' association have? I mean, we're, we're talking about this and it's kind of got a ring to a housing, a homeowners' association thing to it. I mean, how, how, how far can the county go in a, in a, in a comp plan to tell people, you know, you've got to do this?
Not that much. And getting that into the granular details might be too minute for the focus of a comprehensive plan. And to answer the question, how much juice does a homeowners' association has, that's going to be variable depending on the declaration we've got at play, kind of the capacity in terms of both human resources and interest and diligence that that HOA and its officers or its agents are going to show in correcting violations. And then what they've got to work with too, because some HOAs, we're talking modest, meager dudes that can't even, I mean, not can have a headquarters, they don't have anything to keep the lights on, but even, you know, getting a lawyer a couple hundred dollars to just write a cease and desist letter might be on the means of some. At the county level, I can tell you this, the blight ordinance that we have is about 11 years old at this point. It's due for a review and it's due for maybe an update to its enabling legislation from Annapolis. That's something to work on. That's something at least internally. We've, county attorney's office and Lugum will be looking at, because we have one event coming next year, it's rumored, where we're expecting maybe a change in potentially judicial personnel who've been overseeing this. And we might be, it's a serendipitous time to revisit how we've been doing things anyways, is what I'm saying. We can certainly take a stab at rewriting, but.
How about if in this goal two, we just leave, goal two, encouraging the maintenance and upkeep of existing housing, and don't go into the minutia of these other action things until we can figure out
What the heck we can do.
What we can and what we can't do.
So, so take away all the actions?
Yes.
That's my opinion.
That's my vote.
No, I don't vote that.
I didn't say keep it there. I said, I mean, I'm suggesting we get some information. What, what are you going to put in there that you know?
For example, support an action, support incentive programs for the rehabilitation of housing. What are the incentive programs? How do we help? No, but that's what I'm saying. That's what this action does. This action says, puts something to me that says, can the county not help identify all of the state, state, or I don't know if the county has any. It sounds like we don't know if the county has any, but it's investigating what options we have to bring these forward.
So, if my read of the dais is correct, it's, there's just some difficulty moving from the abstraction of these particular policies presented at a very high level, whereas maybe we haven't in things discussed here before, and just not sure how in terms of nuts and bolts and actual on-the-ground actions we can take, and we're just having a difficulty picturing this one. And at least, I don't know about state grants or anything, but I can certainly at least do a write-up on how code enforcement, the blight ordinance, what we have on the books right now, how we enforcement, what it typically looks, that's doable and deliverable if that would help. And I don't know what else.
Then you'd just say, make sure that we adhere to it.
Well, and I, and I will say the other thing to add there is, as an attorney for a couple of decades, I've spent a fair amount of my practice, for better or for worse, preparing the, the covenants that you're talking about for subdivisions of, of significant size in other jurisdictions. And the county does not have a leg to stand on when it comes to enforcing those covenants. Those covenants are very specific in the back as to the parties that are allowed to enforce those covenants. It's one property owner against another, or it's the governing body of, of the HOA that enforces those covenants. County has no role.
Jessica, what's the, or Brandy or John, what's the difference in the, what's the gap between the county's livability code before it gets to the blight? What, what is the livability code? Is there a specific code that says it must meet this?
Blight predominantly fixates on the exterior, on the exterior appearance of a house. The, and it goes into more detail in this, but at a high level, the blight ordinance attaches to any time you have objectively verifiable physical signs of like lack of maintenance, disrepair, overgrown plants that substantially impair the property values of the neighborhood, substantially impair the neighborhood, it's just not, I'd like my neighbor's, you know, grass to be as cut as neatly as mine, substantially impair, or that, you know, just on their face present kind of a clear and present danger to health and human safety. The livability code by comparison actually will go inside the house and is really there to protect tenants from landlords that will not take care of the property and will not respond to it.
So, your mold problem?
Right.
Well, I actually, I should not have taken
Yeah, yeah, no, careful. Take that.
Sorry. No, I'm going to take that one back.
Mold actually, and it comes up, mold is not exactly necessary part of the livability codes, and that's actually a controversial statewide issue right now, but, okay, I made my peace on that one.
But is anybody enforcing the livability?
Yes, we do have, livability code complaints are investigated, they are enforced. I can't rattle you off everything that triggers that the way I came to the blight ordinance, but it does do there, kind of the, what limits the reach of the livability code though, it only applies to rental properties. So, it's only something that involves, there's a landlord or a tenant. And I don't know if the theory is that, you know, if somebody wants to live without running water, that's their God-given right if they own the property and they want to, but it only applies
Quite a few.
to rentals.
Okay.
Is kind of the biggest difference between the livability code besides that it actually does look into what's going on the inside. Blight, again, is what's going on the outside, and does it interfere with my property values or my ability to use and enjoy my own property next door?
I was just going to throw in one kind of piece of proof or thought, I guess, with respect to this goal and everything that's followed over the way it's hit. I think there's, it's not articulated here, but I think there's an element of what you might have heard called NOA before, naturally occurring affordable housing, and that that is, you have some affordable housing within your current inventory of housing in the county, and some of those properties may be in decline for a variety of different reasons. Some communities choose to either create supports for those homeowners or property owners to maintain that housing so that there is an affordable product when they leave, so because it's hard to recreate affordable housing, it's very expensive. And also just to maintain quality housing across the community. This is also an opportunity, like some have talked about, to advertise what public housing authority is offering today with respect to the programs they have, and maybe even access to state funding programs that residents may not be familiar with. So, that's just something to consider with respect to this.
All right. So, are we back to what actions do you want to leave in here? What actions do you want to strike?
I can go down them one by one, get a consensus.
Okay.
Policy 2.1, assure a quality housing stock for residents, assure a safe and adequate housing stock for residents, and improve standard housing conditions. How do we assure safe and adequate housing stock?
I can't go along with any of that.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking anybody that question.
I think this is just a lofty sort of visionary kind of a thing.
Why is it in there?
That's what I mean.
Well, I think it also is to
It was in there before. That's why it's in there probably.
In respect to the ordinance that you have in place. I mean, those are the tools, whether or not you have the resources to enforce with those tools is another consideration.
Which is why I think that we should have you writing.
My, my sense of, not to interject, but it is 433.
I didn't say write it today.
It, it does seem like that, you know, for at least a majority of the board, it sounds like you want more information and we can do, prepare some additional background memo or information on this goal too. And like, my part at least, I think that can be put together pretty, pretty quickly.
Well said.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to know, you know, this is, might not be John, but what are there county programs that we're not aware of here in the planning commission? Like, when we look at 2, 2.1.3, through, you know, where it says, through new county programs, are they there? I mean, maybe we could just find out a little bit more information about those?
We're going to stop here. We're going to stop here.
So, Leanne, we're going to work on goal two. We need information on our action items.
Recording in progress.
All right.
Okay, you're back.
I think they might have lost the feed for a second.
I think consensus is we're going to work on goal two, get more information on our action items.
So, like, you want to know if there's incentive programs for rehabilitation or replacement of deteriorating housing stock?
Mm-hmm, you know, or other programs that the county may have that we're not aware of. And do we have any relationship with the housing authority, you know, in terms of some of the initiatives that I understand they're pursuing?
Yep, we can, we can certainly talk to Mike Bellis and, and find it.
And John is going to work on 2.1.2.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I volunteered, so I'm going to do the work. I knew, I knew that was coming.
I'm putting your name right there. It's, it's in purple ink.
We appreciate, appreciate that, Mr. Hauser.
And I think there's two more action items.
Yep. And then the other one is 2.1.4, to enforce existing quality and safety regulations. You kind of do that, don't you?
To the extent that resources are available to do so.
That's already, that's already in place. And required demolition, and same thing with this, required demolition or protections of unsafe or abandoned structures. I know of a couple in, Michigan Park.
Recording in progress.
We've worn the machine out.
I think we keep losing the public feed.
Like tearing them down?
What's that?
I think we're losing the public feed.
Amy's having technical difficulties.
Anyhow, the required demolition or protections of unsafe, I mean, that's been taking place before. I know of a couple places where the county has gone in and taken the structure down.
We've saw it. We've got a famous example that you all will be familiar with. When I began the job, one of the things I inherited from former deputy county attorney, Mr. Murphy, was the demolition order against the former Belvedere Hotel.
Oh, that's right, mm-hmm.
Yep, it happens.
So, so you're good with those two actions?
Of the Belvedere.
Oh. So, you're good with those two actions?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and Brandy, I apologize, we, we got cut off for just a second, so we did not hear which ones you were okay with. Do you mind if we just quickly go through that in a, Brandy, let the feed.
2 dot 1 dot 4 and 2 dot 1 dot 5.
And were you okay with, uh, 1 through 3 as well?
No.
No.
No, we're going to go back and, sorry. We're going to work and get some additional information.
John's going to write it.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John, boy.
We'll see you Sunday when you have that done for us.
After 11:30.
Let's do goal three. And goal four is, is long, and I don't think we're going to get through it. So, I don't really want to start a goal if we're not going to be able to finish a goal. Is that okay?
That's why we built in, in that extra time for next meeting, you bet.
So, goal three, to foster rural neighborhood conservation to continue to support the protection of rural lands and neighborhoods that carry economic importance and historic character in St. Mary's County. Always want to do that.
Yeah, we need our farmlands.
Yeah. Policy 3, one, to preserve neighborhood character by ensuring that new housing units are compatible with existing rural neighborhoods. I guess they don't want to put a modern, ultra-modern structure next to the Sodley Mansion or something like that type of thing. They have to preserve the character of existing rural neighborhoods through compatible housing developments and design standards that reflect local context and history. This supported through the application of residential neighborhood conservation zoning district. That's good.
I remember us talking about this before.
This is all new.
This one wasn't new when we put in 10 years ago.
So, yeah, I was going to say new policy, that 3, 3.1 is a new policy, but it sounds like we've been doing this.
Right, we, we've had the RNC zoning for years.
Okay, so, yeah.
So, you're good with it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we're going to, we're going to hold off on it.
Okay.
Lot to chew on today.
Well, I hope you found the, the time productive.
That discussion.
While, you know, it's certainly maybe longer than, than some folks sitting at home might be, you know, looking for on a Friday afternoon. These are the kind of discussions and, and back and forth that, that needs to happen to explore and, I guess, evaluate options for bringing forward a comprehensive plan when we get to that point that, that's, that's worthy of, of our, of our stamp. So, I appreciate the time that you all have taken with us today. We will carry on, um, next Friday at 2 o'clock where we will discuss these two items. And then next up after that, Gabby, can you refresh my recollection? Is that public safety for the 21st? Bear with me for just a moment.
Well, you got Public Health and Community Services.
Yes, okay, yep.
Thank you for the maps. Yes, these are most helpful.
Yep, and hang, and hang on to, and hang on to those because as we move, perhaps next time into the growth management part, we'll, we'll delve more into that, so stay tuned.
Thanks to y'all and your staff and the folks that stayed, hung in for, for the whole thing back there. Appreciate everything today. Okay. Thank y'all, Leanne, Jasmine, appreciate it.
Thank you.